Good evening and welcome to the Buncombe County Board of Education Regular Meeting for Thursday, October the 2nd, 2025. The mission of Buncombe County Schools is to foster a culture of excellence and continuous improvement where every student will thrive and learn from exceptional educators. Our mission is for every Buncombe County School student to graduate on time and prepared to pursue their chosen path as critical thinkers and collaborative leaders in our diverse society. With that, I will call our meeting to order, and please rise for the presentation of colors. Tonight presented by A.C. Reynolds High School, J.R.O.T.C., instructed by Lieutenant Colonel David Wise, U.S. Army Retired, and Sergeant First Class Jamie Brown, United States Army Retired.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence, and I ask tonight for a moment of silence that you consider those of in our community that are still recovering from Hurricane Helene. Thank you, may be seated. Good evening, Board members. First item on our agenda is the approval of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda, please. You have a motion? Is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, our agenda is approved. Board members, staff, and community, I want to take just a moment at the start of this board meeting to pause and reflect on the continuous incredible efforts of our BCS staff. Over the last week, we have all participated likely in events that reflect on the devastating hurricane that changed so many of our lives one year ago. I'm sure many of us have paused to share in the communal grief from losing family and friends and neighbors. At the same time, we've also paused to reflect on the strength and the power of our love for each other as neighbors that has helped us all get through the challenges of the last year. That sense of love and care for our neighbors was displayed very brightly by our BCS staff in the immediate wake of the storm, and we continue to see it on display every single day across Buncombe County Schools. In some cases, that care of our staff for their community was displayed in remarkable acts of bravery and heroism and courage. One of many such acts, for example, came in the form of Bruce Sullivan, a beloved bus driver at Oakley Elementary who answered the call from our Transportation Director Jeremy Stowe to station a bus for evacuations in Swananoa just as rivers were starting to rise. Mr. Sullivan continued to evacuate residents along the Swananoa even as that water began to rise inside the steps of his school bus. In other cases, our love and care for our neighbors throughout BCS was shown more quietly as our administrators set out the diligent task of locating each and every one of our 21,000-plus students and all of our staff, and making sure that they are okay and understanding what their needs were. And also shown by our school counselors and our school social workers, who then followed up very diligently immediately with students and families who were in need of immediate help and then continued to help those families over the past full year. And I personally will always remember walking to Fairview Elementary School just a few days after the storm hit to help distribute water and food, and walking into the parking lot only to see Principal Bellato, excuse me, and several teachers, all there, greeting the community into the school parking lot with a smile on her face. And as I walked over to greet Principal Bellato and give her a hug, she relayed to me that she had driven from Haywood County just to be at school that day, just a few days after the storm, which must have been a very difficult drive, just so that she might see her students that might be coming to school for water or food, and she just hoped that her smile might give them the slightest degree of comfort and regularity amidst the chaos that they were witnessing around them. The teachers were there as well for the same exact purpose, with smiles on their face, having left their own families after a very complicated trauma, there to give comfort to their students that they knew and the neighbors in their community that they had never met before. It was remarkable. So it's been through thousands of acts of kindness and neighborly love like that over the last year that we have all helped each other recover. Dr. Jackson, I want to thank you on behalf of the board for your servant leadership that you displayed every day since you've been here, and on behalf of the board, I want to thank each and every one of our staff who dedicates their entire life to teaching children of our community. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, thank you so much for those heartfelt comments. I certainly want to also thank our Board of Education for your leadership during a very difficult time. Good evening, parents, members of the community, board members, and teammates. Today marks Day 28 of the 2025-2026 school year. It's remarkable to think that we have already completed nearly 16% of this academic year. In these opening weeks, I have once again had the privilege of multiple visits in all 45 of our schools, from Flat Creek to Avery's Creek, from Curtis Creek to Laurel Creek, and across every community in between. I have witnessed classrooms alive with learning, hallways filled with joy, and teams of educators and staff pouring themselves into the success of our students. One year ago today, I shared with our team that even from the greatest tragedy, with grace and with strength, still, together we rise. The strong beginning to this school year we are enjoying is especially meaningful as we continue to grow and move forward through recovery. As we will hear tonight, our school communities have shown resilience and unity, grace and strength, ensuring that even in the midst of this recovery, students and staff feel supported and instruction remains strong. Despite the disruptions last year, our teachers and staff have sustained their focus on what matters most: student well-being and student learning. This month, we take time to celebrate the visionary leadership of our principals as part of National Principals Month. The 45 men and women who lead our schools daily are servant leaders in the truest sense. They set the tone for teaching and learning, they support their staff through challenges, and they create safe and nurturing environments where students thrive. I'm grateful for their presence, their problem-solving, and their people-first leadership. Today, we also celebrate National School Custodian Day, recognizing the often unsung heroes who care for our families and our facilities and provide warm and welcoming learning environments every single day. Their pride in their work is evident in the gleam of polished floors and the readiness of every classroom. They are essential to our mission, and I thank them for all that they do. In addition, we celebrated National Teacher Assistant Day this week, honoring those teammates who provide critical instructional and relational support in classrooms across Buncombe County. Teacher assistants are a lifeline to students and staff alike, and their dedication deserves our heartfelt appreciation. As we move forward into this school year, I'm encouraged by the strong start we have made together. The phrase we've embraced this year, hashtag "lead the climb," reminds us that progress is not made without effort, and reaching the summit requires vision, teamwork, and persistence. I'm deeply proud of the ways our students, staff, and community are leading the climb each day. To our board members, thank you for your leadership and advocacy. To our staff and families, thank you for your ongoing partnership. And to our students, thank you for reminding us of the importance and the purpose of this climb. Mr. Chair, this concludes my comments.
Thank you, Superintendent Jackson. All right, Ken Omer, if you have the floor, hit us with some good news.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Chairman Elliott, board members, Dr. Jackson, BCS teammates, and we are giving you good news for the couple of students who have been leading by example and making a difference in our community. Dr. Johnson is going to help with these first two presentations. First, we'd like to invite Camden Byers to come down. He's a sixth grader at North Windy Ridge Intermediate. Mr. Nicholson, if you'll come join us along with Ms. Franklin.
Dr. Johnson is presenting Camden with an outstanding Community Service Award. Thanks to the skills that he learned in the dual-language program, starting way back in kindergarten at North Buncombe Elementary, and a program that he has continued at North Windy Ridge, Camden was able to translate for neighbors in need in the days following Hurricane Helene. He was a reassuring presence at West Asheville Baptist Church, helping to connect Spanish-speaking families with resources as they were being handed out. Camden, we are so proud of what you did for our community and proving that anybody can make a difference. We thank you so much. Thanks to your family for being here, and thank you for making such a difference. I'll share that Camden's younger brother is also in the dual-language program at North Buncombe Elementary, and his mother shared that sometimes they enjoy having full conversations that she and dad can't understand. Thank you so much, family. Jordan Robertson is with us tonight. She's a senior at Owen High School. If you would join us up front, along with Mr. Cheatham and Principal Don Rookie. Jordan is one of just two students across the entire state selected to represent North Carolina this past summer in Washington, D.C. for Bank of America's Student Leaders Program. The summer program actually started back home here in western North Carolina with an internship at the nonprofit On Track, where she learned about nonprofit operations. In D.C., she joined 300 other student leaders in collaborating over public policy. She has also used her leadership skills to produce the Warhorse 5K, already making a difference here in her community for Owen High School Athletics and the Black Mountain Home for Children. We present an outstanding leadership award to you, Jordan, and wish you continued success. And Jordan's family, you come on down, too. Thank you so much. Congratulations again, Jordan. Ms. Rookie, if you and Mr. Cheatham will stay forward. Ms. Rookie, if you'll stay with us down the front, because Dr. Reed is going to help honor a couple of BCS educators, and we're going to start with a math teacher from Owen High School. If Ms. Karen McPherson would please join us up front. Ms. McPherson is a 2025 finalist for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. This award is our nation's highest honor for teachers in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. It is given to outstanding educators who have demonstrated their passion, dedication, and impact in the classroom. Congratulations, Ms. McPherson. Thank you for representing Buncombe County Schools and the state of North Carolina in earning this very prestigious award. I should share, each year, about 100 outstanding educators are recognized as finalists for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. We are so very proud to say that a Buncombe County School Science teacher is also one of them, Ms. Erin Macarelli of Valley Springs Middle School. If you'll please join us, along with Ms. Churchill and Principal Amy Roney, if you will come on down. From the initial nomination through the completion of her portfolio, Ms. Macarelli clearly demonstrated the positive impact she has had and continues to have on her students and her school. We thank you as well, Ms. Macarelli, for being an amazing ambassador for the Rams, but also the entire Buncombe County School system and the entire state of North Carolina. Congratulations to you, Ms. Erin Macarelli of Valley Springs Middle School. This evening, we would also like to recognize a student musician who has earned a spot on an elite stage, Dalton Howes of Nesbit Discovery Academy. If you'll join us, please, along with Reverend Martin, BCS District Arts Specialist Jamie Graver, your principal, Mr. Thrasher, and your teachers, Dr. Piva and Dr. Bailey. Everybody come on down. Dalton has been selected to bring his violin and join the North Carolina Bandmasters Association for the All-State Orchestra next month in Winston-Salem. These auditions, they are rigorous, and the All-State Orchestra features the best of the best, Dalton. That includes you. Thank you for the time, persistence, and practice it takes to make it to this level, and thank you for using your talents to represent Buncombe County Schools onstage. And we've got Dalton's mom here, and dad, come on down. We'll get a family photo here, too. Again, that performance is going to be in Winston-Salem next month, and we can't wait to hear all about it. Congratulations to you, Dalton. Next, if our 2024-25 Principal of the Year, Mr. Nathan Allison, could come join me here at the podium, along with Greg Burnett of First Citizens Bank and Kristi Cheek of the Buncombe County Schools Foundation, they would like to share a few words about the 2025-26 Principal of the Year, who was surprised just a couple of weeks ago. We're going to bring that individual up front and center, along with Ms. Franklin, Mr. Nicholas Honeycutt of North Buncombe Middle School. If you will please come down and allow us to celebrate you as the brand-new Buncombe County Schools Principal of the Year.
All this attention, are you loving it still? Chairman Elliott, Dr. Jackson, and members of the board, it is a tremendous honor to introduce Mr. Honeycutt as Buncombe County Schools Principal of the Year. He was nominated and selected for this honor by the principals across this county, and I cannot think of a more deserving individual. Mr. Honeycutt, I know you'll represent us well. When you talk with Mr. Honeycutt, it does not take long to realize just how much he loves North Buncombe Middle School, his staff, his students, and that entire community. I had the pleasure of going to North Buncombe Middle School whenever Mr. Honeycutt was surprised with his honor. We were in an auditorium filled with what seemed like to me thousands of middle school students, and I have to admit, I found this very intimidating. Also there that day was your staff, board members, central service staff, and your family. And whenever you walked into that room, the roar of the crowd was absolutely deafening. And I want to give you three quotes. One is from your student. "Mr. Honeycutt is awesome. He deserves Principal of the Year because he treats everyone with respect and kindness. He's not over the top with his rules, and they actually make sense. And I like that he asks our opinions and listens to our answers." And from your staff, "Mr. Honeycutt cares deeply about the students and staff of North Buncombe Middle School. He gives without hesitation to make sure all students feel supported and loved. He works around the clock attending sporting events, music concerts, and much more. His dedication is like none other, and I'm grateful to work with him daily." And then from another staff member, "I've had the opportunity to work with and for many good principals. In my book, Mr. Honeycutt ranks with the best. He treats students, school employees, and parents with respect, grace, and kindness. He willingly serves others even when the job is below his rank. He embodies the saying, 'Do the right thing even when no one is watching.' I admire his integrity, and I feel honored to call him my principal." Mr. Honeycutt, we know you love North Buncombe Middle School, but through the roar of that crowd that day and the quotes from your staff and students, something is very apparent to me: they love you, too. We love you, we are proud of you, and congratulations.
Well, I have known Mr. Honeycutt for about 35 years. So I'll let you do the math on how old he was when I first met him. So I promised him tonight that I would not embarrass him. So I'm going to keep, I'm going to keep that promise for you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Greg Burnett. I'm the executive of First Citizens Bank here in western North Carolina, and First Citizens is proud to support the Buncombe County Schools and the Buncombe County Schools Foundation through the sponsorship of the Principal of the Year Award. As a 127-year-old financial services company, we focus on building long-lasting relationships and making a difference in the lives of our clients. And one way in which we do that is be an active participant in building strong communities. And we know that our community is only as strong as our children. Tonight, we are so proud to recognize Nicholas Honeycutt as this year's Principal of the Year. As we all know, this past year has been a challenge for everyone, but especially our children and our educators. Mr. Honeycutt is a wonderful example of an educator and administrator who makes a positive impact on his staff, on his students, and on his peers. The care that he shows his students is apparent in everything that he does, and it's an honor to present him this award. Congratulations, Mr. Honeycutt, for being this year's Principal of the Year.
My name is Kristi Cheek. I'm the Executive Director of the Buncombe County Schools Foundation, and it is truly an honor to celebrate Mr. Honeycutt. So on behalf of the Buncombe County Schools Foundation Board and First Citizens Bank, we say congratulations for you as an outstanding educator and leader, and you make us very proud. Thank you.
Mr. Honeycutt, you got to hear people say some wonderful things about you and had to stand up there. I'd like to give you an opportunity, if you'd like to say anything to the BCS family tonight.
Any principal can always speak. I have no worries about that. So thank you. Thank you for that wonderful introduction, Principal Allison. Thank you for those words. Thank you for being at North Buncombe Middle the day this surprise happened. And in every principal's meeting, Mr. Allison usually finds a way to say, "Go Rams," but this day at North Buncombe Middle School, he said, "Go Blackhawks." So thank you, Principal Allison. Thank you so very much. To be recognized by my colleagues, the people that I respect and admire so deeply, is truly one of the greatest honors of my career. It is a privilege to lead, and an even greater privilege to learn from such an outstanding group of principals. Thank you for this honor. I am both humbled and grateful, and I'm energized to keep moving forward. Every day, I get to do work that matters with students, teachers, families, and leaders who inspire me. Each of you know the challenges and the joys of this work, and to have your vote of confidence is an incredible privilege. This plaque may have my name on it, but it really represents the incredible work happening in our schools across this district. I am proud to serve alongside each of you, and I am excited about what we continue to accomplish together for students. And as we read each week in the blair, "We lead this climb together." Being a principal is really a dream come true. When I was young and played school with my sister and my cousins, I was the oldest, so I always played the role of the principal. In elementary school, I begged my dad to get me early to school a few days a week so I could help the custodian turn the lights on. I truly believe that being a principal is one of the most exciting and rewarding jobs in education. Every day, we get the chance to shape the culture of a school, to support teachers as they do the most important work that there is, and to cheer on students as they grow and stretch and discover, especially in middle school, who they are becoming. And that is an awesome responsibility, but also an incredible gift. So this recognition, again, is not just about me. It reflects the team that I get to work with each day. I am blessed with a staff who show up every day for kids and families, a community that partners with us, and students who remind me daily of why this work matters. They keep me inspired and motivated.
an honor to celebrate Mr. Honeycutt. So on behalf of the Buncombe County Schools Foundation Board and First Citizens Bank, we say congratulations for you as an outstanding educator and leader, and you make us very proud. Thank you.
Mr. Honeycutt, you got to hear people say some wonderful things about you and had to stand up there. I'd like to give you an opportunity, if you'd like to say anything to the BCS family tonight.
Any principal can always speak. I have no worries about that. So thank you. Thank you for that wonderful introduction, Principal Allison. Thank you for those words. Thank you for being at North Buncombe Middle the day this surprise happened. And in every principals' meeting, Mr. Allison usually finds a way to say, "Go Rams," but this day at North Buncombe Middle School, he said, "Go Blackhawks." So thank you, Principal Allison. Thank you so very much. To be recognized by my colleagues, the people that I respect and admire so deeply, is truly one of the greatest honors of my career. It is a privilege to lead, and an even greater privilege to learn from such an outstanding group of principals. Thank you for this honor. I am both humbled and grateful, and I'm energized to keep moving forward. Every day, I get to do work that matters with students, teachers, families, and leaders who inspire me. Each of you know the challenges and the joys of this work, and to have your vote of confidence is an incredible privilege. This plaque may have my name on it, but it really represents the incredible work happening in our schools across this district. I am proud to serve alongside each of you, and I am excited about what we continue to accomplish together for students. And as we read each week in the blair, we lead this climb together. Being a principal is really a dream come true. When I was young and played school with my sister and my cousins, I was the oldest, so I always played the role of the principal. In elementary school, I begged my dad to get me early to school a few days a week so I could help the custodian turn the lights on. I truly believe that being a principal is one of the most exciting and rewarding jobs in education. Every day, we get the chance to shape the culture of a school, to support teachers as they do the most important work that there is, and to cheer on students as they grow and stretch and discover, especially in middle school, who they are becoming. And that is an awesome responsibility, but also an incredible gift. So this recognition, again, is not just about me. It reflects the team that I get to work with each day. I am blessed with a staff who show up every day for kids and families, a community that partners with us, and students who remind me daily of why this work matters. They keep me inspired and motivated to continue giving my best. I also, again, want to say how much I value being a part of the community of principals in Buncombe County. We share ideas, we share celebrations, we share struggles, we lift one another up, and we make each other better. So thank you again for this recognition, for the encouragement, and the privilege of serving alongside you. I'm excited where we're headed together and truly grateful of this moment. Thank you.
Congratulations again, Mr. Honeycutt. And finally, in good news, it's a celebration for our entire Buncombe County Schools Board of Education. I'd like to ask all the members of our board to come front and center, please, because this is an accomplishment earned thanks to the commitment of all of you to do your best for the students and staff of Buncombe County Schools. Our board has earned the Gold Bell Award from the North Carolina School Boards Association. You should know this is the highest full-board award for professional development, meaning that every single one of our board members took part in education and training programs. We celebrate your accomplishment, your commitment to never stop learning, and everything you do for our students and staff in earning the North Carolina School Boards Association Gold Bell Award. Congratulations to the Buncombe County Board of Education. As our board returns to their seats, if we can have our other good news recipients, follow my friends Michaela and Brianna out for a couple of group photos. Also, a quick reminder that you can see more good things happening every day in our classrooms at buncomeschools.org and by following Buncombe Schools on social media. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Olmer.
Next on our agenda is Strategic Plan Highlights. I believe Dr. Reed is going to lead us discussion around testing and accountability results.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Good evening, Mr. Elliott, Dr. Jackson, members of the board. It's my pleasure this evening to present to you our Testing and Accountability Report. This is a report that we do annually, and this particular one is based on our results from the 24-25 school year. Our approach to data in Buncombe County Schools is and has always been from a spirit of continuous improvement. And in that spirit, we always take time to notice and appreciate and celebrate all of the wonderful things that the story of our data tells, and we will do that this evening. We will also take a look at some areas of opportunity that we face in that spirit of continuous improvement. I just mentioned this idea of a story. So I'm going to backtrack about 13 months to the start of the 24-25 school year. Our theme for the year, as Dr. Jackson said, was Together We Rise. We started the year strong, with optimism, with momentum, and a really strong sense of belonging. And about a month later, Hurricane Helene came along. That was a pretty large pause button on the momentum that we started the year with. But through all of that, we did rise together throughout those circumstances. And we think of our data telling a story. I couldn't start that story without thinking about the impact that the hurricane certainly had on teaching and learning in our school system. Over the course of the fall of last year, due to the hurricane, we missed 19 student instructional days. In addition to that, we had one of the worst winter weather seasons that we've had in our region for a long time. And so in addition to those 19 days, we did miss, we did have a certain amount of remote instruction days, kind of depending on where you live throughout our system. We also know remote instruction is no equivalent to in-person instruction. And so there was a compounding impact on all of that missed instruction, because what the hurricane did is it impacted every single person in the western region of North Carolina and beyond. It impacted our teachers, our principals, our families, our students. And that, in turn, impacted some of the conditions for learning the rest of the school year. We were focused on well-being, on making sure that our students and our families were safe. But I am so proud of how our teachers, our school staff, and our principals led through all of this into a really strong finish academically for our students. I will also remind you, you may mention when we talked about the board adding hours back to our calendar last year, we were under the impression that there would be some growth reformulations that would account for our missed instructional days. We recently learned that there were no changed calculations in our growth scores for last year based on missed instructional days, and I think that's important for you to notice as you view the data from last year. All of our strategic highlight presentations are grounded in our strategic plan. This is the board's plan that took into account a great amount of stakeholder input and established our core beliefs, which is how we approach everything in our school system, that we engage students in meaningful ways, we value collaboration and connection, strong family and community partnerships, we support our educators, and we invest for equity and excellence. Our strategic plan goal one is all around the data that we'll be presenting tonight. The goal one is that every school will meet or exceed growth while also increasing in proficiency across all content areas, all subgroups, which tonight you're going to hear me refer to as student groups, as measured by multiple indicators of progress. That includes state assessments. We are leading the climb this year in Buncombe County Schools, and there are several things here for us to be proud of. One of those is that 93% of our elementary and intermediate schools met or exceeded growth in reading, 31 of our schools met or exceeded growth overall, and 19 of our schools improved in grade-level proficiency. At this time, I'll also highlight our cohort graduation rate. This metric is one of the most important, and we often think of graduation rate as being owned only by our high schools, but in fact, it measures K through 12 success. And so when you look at that metric, you can see that 91.4% of Buncombe County School students, seniors graduated last year. That's our second-highest cohort graduation rate in the history of Buncombe County Schools by just 1/10th of a percent compared to the previous year. And you can see that we are still well above the graduation rate for the state of North Carolina as a whole, and generally, you can see that blue line shows an upward trend in graduation rate, because we won't be satisfied until we reach 100%. In addition to cohort graduation rates, we're looking at ACT composite scores. ACT is a nationally-normed exam that measures college readiness of our high school students. They take this test in their junior year, and it is used to get them into college with their applications many times. The state, or the UNC system, minimum score for ACT is a 17, and you can see in that blue line there, we are at 19.1 in our average composite score for our high school juniors in Buncombe County Schools, which is equivalent to our highest ACT score ever, and we're so proud of that. And again, also above the state. In our high schools, students have two ways to earn college credits, either through advanced placement or AP courses and AB Tech dual enrollment courses. For our advanced placement courses, 1,199 credits were successfully earned, that's with a score of three or better. And for our college course credits through AB Tech, there were 6,307 successfully completed courses, and that's with a grade of C or better. We are so thankful for our partners in this work and for AB Tech and all that they do to partner with us in ways that benefit our students and help them be prepared for their future. I'll also show you this slide. This is about credentials. So industry-recognized credentials are a big deal, because what that does, if a student graduates with a credential, it shows that they have the skills and the knowledge that our employers are seeking, and so it gives them a leg up in the job market or potentially further education. In the year 21-22 through 23-24, our credential numbers were fairly stagnant. Those numbers did include ACT Work Keys scores. The Work Keys test is a test that some of our high school students take who've been in a series of CTE courses, and if they had scored a gold, a silver, or a platinum, those scores would be counted in those credential numbers. Well, this past school year, 24-25, those ACT Work Keys scores are no longer going to be included in our credential numbers. So the increase that you see is actually very significant, because it is much higher than the year before, and if we were to add those ACT Work Keys numbers on top of that, it would be around 3,700 credentials compared to the year before, which was 1,760. And so we are so proud of that metric, and we're going to continue to work with our wonderful CTE department to increase the credentials, because we know that attainment of employment afterwards is impacted by that. And yes, we have more to celebrate. We have four schools that increased one entire letter grade last year: Lester Elementary, who also exited low-performing status, Hawk Creek Elementary, North Buncombe Elementary, and Johnston Elementary School. And we're so proud. It is a significant measure of success, because it does reflect improved proficiency. Eight of our schools have exceeded growth for three or more consecutive years, showing a tradition of being excellent and meeting the needs of the students they serve. That's AC Reynolds High School, Buncombe County Early College, Valley Springs Middle School, Candler, Sand Hill, West Buncombe, North Buncombe Elementary, and Weaverville Elementary, and we couldn't be more proud of them. One more little shout-out here, Valley Springs Growth Score was in the top 1% of the state, and Lester Elementary School was in the top 5% of the state, and that's something to be proud of. Our school system exceeded expected growth in literacy for grades 3 through 7 combined. That speaks volumes to the focus and consistency in our literacy instruction that we've implemented over the course of several years. In addition to that, when you look at K through 3 literacy, there are similar rates of growth in all student groups over the course of the year. And in third grade meeting, reading, and then also high school Math III, there is a trend upwards in proficiency across our student groups. The pictures on the ends there, the left and the right, are some small-group literacy instruction, which is something I'm so proud of in Buncombe County Schools, that we've been able to consistently address early literacy, because what we know about literacy, especially by third grade, if students are proficient, they are more likely to graduate from high school and move on into college. The picture in the middle is West Buncombe Elementary, and they were recently named a distinguished Title I school for closing achievement gaps. In fact, I think that happened last week or the week before, and we couldn't be more proud of the work that happens at West Buncombe Elementary. All right, so we're going to stop there with celebrations, even though we could continue on with that, and we're going to take a deeper dive into growth and proficiency. There are always a lot of questions about what's the difference between growth and proficiency, and then how do you relate the two, and what story can both of those metrics tell? Steve Earwood, our former Director of Testing and Accountability, used to always use this race analogy, and I think it's brilliant. On the left, you see a picture of a man crossing a finish line. When you think of proficiency, it is like running a race with a very clearly marked finish line. And so when we're thinking about our students, proficient is how close did they get to that line? Did they cross it, or did they not cross it? Were they proficient, or were they not proficient? But there is no consideration in proficiency about where they started the race. And so it's the same metric used to measure every student, no matter where they started. Growth, on the other hand, is like running a race with no finish line. However, all the participants start at the same place. It's a comparative measure. Every student starts where they are, they run as far and as fast as they can. And so the question is, how did our students in Buncombe County Schools do compared to other students who started the race from the exact same place? It's all about taking students from where they are and growing them just as much as we can. It's our students versus the average of similar students who started in the same place. So we're going to do a little exercise and an illustration around growth and proficiency. So this is a pretty simple graph here. There's no data on it quite yet. The Growth Index is the x-axis. The zero there is the Growth Index. It is average growth over time. Did a student make an average amount of growth, and sometimes we even say a year's worth of progress for a year's amount of instruction? Proficiency is the y-axis. 50 is there because it's in the middle. It's pretty much an arbitrarily-chosen number. But for a student to be proficient in North Carolina by North Carolina standards, which we'll call grade-level proficiency, if you love acronyms, you can say GLP. So grade-level proficient students score a Level 3, 4, or 5. They either are proficient by scoring a 3, 4, or 5, or they are not proficient. Okay? We're going to continue to explore this chart in terms of growth only. So a Growth Index of negative 2 to positive 2 is considered meeting growth. That's a wide range there, because there's a standard error. Even though we say 0 is average growth, in this calculation, there's a little bit of room for error, and so anything below, slightly below and above that line is meeting growth. Anything above a 2.0 index score is exceeding growth. And anything below negative 2 would be not meeting growth. So when you put all this together, it's a very colorful chart, and the colors are important to remember. We usually associate blue with exceeding growth, green with meeting growth, and red with not meeting growth. So a Growth Score of 3.6 would fall in that exceeds-growth range, whereas a Growth Index score of negative 3.6 would fall in the does-not-meet-growth range. Now we're going to switch to proficiency, and then we're going to put it all together in a way that I hope makes sense to everyone. And so proficiency there is the y-axis. I've used the color green to show anything above 50% proficient, and red to show anything below 50% proficient. Again, 50% is a bit of an arbitrary number that's chosen here. Anything above 50% proficient would be, here you see, 80% proficient would be there to the right, and a 40% proficient would be to the left of the y-axis. When you put all this together, we're going to sit here for just a moment, you can see that it forms quadrants that overlay growth and proficiency. Anything above that 0-growth-index line would be in a quadrant that's high, considered higher growth. We want our schools to be above that y-axis where they are showing growth, they're meeting or they're exceeding growth. We also want our schools to be as high in proficiency as possible. What we do know about proficiency is that it is directly related to socioeconomic factors. That doesn't give us an excuse. We can grow over time and incrementally reach higher levels of proficiency, but there is a direct correlation. So again, we want our schools to be above that Growth Index of 0 as much as possible, and ideally, we would want them to be as close to that right quadrant as possible with higher growth and higher proficiency. This is Buncombe County Schools. This is the same graph I just showed you. Kind of recalibrate your eyes here with the different colors, but you have the same y-axis at 50% proficient, and you have the same x-axis at a 0 score, a 0-Growth Index. You can also see that I've layered on green horizontal lines for that standard error that you see. Anything between negative 2 and positive 2 would be meeting growth. And again, we want everything above the negative 2-meet-growth line, and we want it as high above that line as we can possibly get it. Yes.
Just to clarify, on the percent proficiency, the 50% means 50% of the students in that school.
That's right.
Scored a 3, 4, or 5.
That's correct. 50% of the students in that 50% of the students in that school would have scored a three, four, or five. And so sometimes we think about growth at the student level. But this particular graph is looking at this individual school. And so every dot on this chart represents a school in Buncombe County Schools. And where they're plotted on this graph by plotting both growth and proficiency together. And so I have kind of circled there a cluster of schools that are really where we want them to be. We want them to be above that negative two growth line. And we want them to be just as proficient as possible there towards the right. And then below, we have a cluster of schools that are below that growth line that we want to be above the growth line. Because we know that consistent growth over time will also increase proficiency. This is another graph. And every, it's the same type graph. You've got the same green lines from negative two to positive two. But the gray dots here is every school throughout the state of North Carolina. And this particular one shows end of grade math. The purple dots are every school in Buncombe County Schools. It's actually grades three through eight because they take the EOG. And you can see that our purple dots are well in bounds of the dots throughout the state. And you can see they're all really clustered there together towards the middle. It just shows you that our pattern certainly correlates with the state level pattern around the correlation of achievement and growth. And then you'll see there are some outlier dots. I just told you Valley Springs has, you know, the highest growth, top 1% of the state. And their purple dot is going to be a bit of an outlier there. And that's what we want to strive for, is to be the outlier, where we don't predict outcomes based on socioeconomic and other factors. Now, let's talk about growth. So our state measures the growth of each school. And they use this growth index score, just like we talked about. And this is a pattern, this is a trend graph from 22, 23 to the past school year, which is 24, 25. The blue bar are schools, the number of schools that exceeded growth. The green is the number of schools that met. And the red is the number of schools that did not meet growth. And you can see we do have an increased number of schools that did not meet growth throughout the course of that year through last year. And we also have a little bit of a decrease there with the number of schools that exceeded and about the same number of schools that met growth. You can see the list of those schools here. So we're going to take all of that knowledge and information about growth. And now we're going to overlay it one more time with proficiency. Our state grades every single school throughout North Carolina on an A through F scale. Although it's a little bit different because our scale is a 15-point scale. So any school that has an 85 to a 100 would be considered having a grade of an A. And then if you are 70 to an 84, it's a grade of a B and so on. The interesting part of this formula, which was made permanent by our state in 2019, is that this overall score is made up of 20% growth. We have a lot more control over growth than we do proficiency. And it's made of 80% proficiency. And so when there's a secret formula that happens behind the scenes of the 20% growth and the 80% proficiency to give our schools a composite grade. Okay? So in Buncombe County Schools, we are proud that 34 out of 44 of our schools received a performance grade of C or better. That's slightly over 77% of our schools. Three of our schools received an A. We couldn't be more proud of Buncombe County Early College, the Buncombe County Center for Career Innovation, and Nesbit Discovery Academy. Again, that's slightly reflective of the fact that proficiency definitely can be correlated with some other factors, with socioeconomic factors. This is an overview of all of our school performance grades. So if you see the table on the left, you can see the number of schools that received each of those letter grades. And then the graph here actually shows a comparison on performance grades from the 23, 24 school year to the 24, 25 school year. There are celebrations here with our overall performance grades. We actually have one more school that received a B, one fewer school that received a C, one more school that received a D because we had two schools that received an F the year before. And one of those schools no longer has that rating. Shout out to Johnston Elementary School for years and years of consistent work and intentionality behind everything that they do. That is a huge celebration. And it's proof that we can move the needle on all of this data. And here's a list of our schools and the school performance grades for each of them. Now, the school performance grade is also used to determine a state designation. The state calls this the designation of low performing. We don't love this designation because all of our schools are high performing. They're incredible, their principals are incredible, their teachers are. They work so hard for their students day in and day out. But we want to make sure that you know, as the board, what this means and which schools are on this particular list. For a school to be low performing, they would receive a grade of either a D or an F. And then they either meet or don't meet expected growth. And so the list there on the right are our schools that have this designation this year. And the top four of those schools are on the list, but they also met growth. We have the same total number of schools on this list that we had last year. We had Lester exit this list and we're so proud of them. And INCA Intermediate did come back on this list this year. The state has a list of requirements that we have to follow this fall to ensure that we're supporting our schools appropriately. And one of those things is that we'll send a letter home at the end of October to all of our school families to let them know about the designation and exactly what we're doing to move the needle forward for those schools. Our local Board of Education will approve their school improvement plans in December. And in the meantime, there'll be a public input window for our school improvement plans at those schools throughout the month of November. Those plans are then shared with the Department of Public Instruction. And there are staff at DPI who go in and give comments on their NC Star Plan. It's very important to our central services that we are here for these schools and that we are supporting them in ways that will be meaningful to them. We have tailored instructional coaching. We support professional learning communities. We visit school improvement teams, give feedback to the principal and those teams. We schedule collaborative support sessions with the leadership teams of all of those schools so that we can listen to them, we can review data together, and make steps that are going to leverage improvement. We do walkthroughs together. And I'm so proud this year that we've been able to leverage some grant funding that we had from Hurricane Helene for continued recovery to have a half-time interventionist at all of the middle schools on this list. We also prioritize staffing such as social workers, counselors, teachers, and assistants at those schools. It's very important to us to make sure that we approach that with that lens of equity in our staffing. And this year, in the past several years, we've seen our numbers fluctuate with the amount of beginning teachers who come in with an alternate teaching license. This year, we have almost 40% of our beginning teachers who've come in with an alternate license, which means that they've not experienced the student teaching and the educational coursework that some of our other teachers had. And so we know that's an area where we need to make sure we're paying attention to, especially in these schools. All right, so now we're going to dig into a little bit more data. We're going to take a look at proficiency and growth now by subject and student group. There'll be some snapshots from last year. And then we'll also talk a little bit about trends. Before we do that, I want to show you some trends in our enrollment over the past four years. You can see that our enrollment has changed mainly in two of our student groups. Our white student group enrollment has decreased. We're at around 63%. While our Hispanic student group has increased to nearing 23% of our population in Buncombe County Schools. And this was data based on last year. All other student groups are remaining very much the same over time. This is to add to your vocabulary here. In education, we love acronyms. So this is a list of acronyms that apply directly to testing and accountability. EDS, economically disadvantaged. SWD, students with disabilities. ML or EL would be multilingual learner or English learner. I've talked to you a little bit about grade level proficient being levels three, four, and five on a test. And then college and career ready would be levels four and five. That is actually a designation that our federal government uses. Our state government adopts the grade level proficient standard. So when we talk proficiency tonight, we're talking levels three, four, and five. And of course, beginning, middle, and end of the year. So let's talk beginning, middle, and end of the year. I told you earlier how proud we are of our literacy growth over time. Literacy is tied to outcomes of our students. And so we know how important early literacy is. What this shows you is a snapshot of last school year. The cluster of bars there on the left is the beginning of the year. And you can see the blue bar. 20% of our kindergarten students were actually proficient, according to the standards within this state assessment in literacy at the beginning of the year. And you can see by the middle of the year, they grew to 38% proficient, which is lower than typical because remember how many instructional days they missed. And then by the end of the year, what a celebration. 73% of our kindergarten students were considered proficient. And it's not the same standards they enter the year with. The standard of what proficient means actually changes from beginning to middle to the end of the year. And you can see similar trends there in first, second, and third grade. And what you'll notice at the end of the year is that we, the test obviously gets more challenging as the year goes on. And so we're always aiming to make sure that our collective improvement over time will show up in our third grade end of year results. This is a trend graph. Really proud of this because it shows you from the year 21, 22 to last school year, it shows you the end of the year proficiency results. And so back in 21, 22, our kindergarten students were 70% proficient at the end of the year. And at the end of last year, we were 73. And the trend is the same and very similar in all of those grade levels. But what you will see is in first and second grade, there was a slight dip last year. We didn't grow those first and second graders as much as we have. And it begs the question if the days of missed instruction really did have an impact on those literacy skills. However, our third grade students, who are measured on comprehension, did really incredible. And over the course of time, they've added, they are 11% more proficient than they were three years ago, which to me is really incredible. And this particular snapshot shows by student group how our students did last year in each student group from the beginning of the year, which is the blue bar, to the end of the year, which is the red bar. And across all student groups, there was a very similar amount of gain over time. And what that shows you is our instruction is addressing the needs through all of our subgroups in early literacy. Now we're going to shift to talking about official accountability results in terms of EOG and EOC courses, or tests, excuse me. And I've had the question recently about who is actually included in our test scores? When you think about some of these student groups? One, for students with disabilities, all students count in our test scores. Most of the students with disabilities are regular end of grade, regular end of course testing. And that counts for both proficiency and growth. We also have students who are taught on the Extended Content Standards. They take a test called Extend One. And those student scores do count only in proficiency. There's another metric for our multilingual learners called EL Progress. And for EL Progress, there's an annual amount of progress each student should make. If they make that progress or they exit from needing support, then they count favorably on this metric, which is called EL Progress. And in addition to that, our ML student group counts very uniquely in the first three years that they're in the US. In the first year, it's only participation. Did they take the test or did they not take the test? In the second year, they only count in growth. How much did they grow over time from where they started? However, in the third year is when they're included both in growth and proficiency. Under the Every Student Succeeds Act, we are measured with certain indicators. The indicators in grades three through eight are ELA and math, both proficiency and growth. Science grades five and eight proficiency and growth. The English learner progress metric that I just shared. And it's interesting that we have in those grade levels, 17 more schools have an EL Progress indicator. And the year previous, we had 13 schools. And so it shows you that increase in that ML population throughout our school system. And then for high schools, they have additional metrics. You often will not see high schools on the list of low performing schools because they end up with typically higher grades. So the A, the B, and the C, you'll see more in the high schools because there's a variety of metrics that go into that calculation for high schools. And you can see those here. Three of our high schools have an indicator for EL Progress. All right, now, let's look quickly at how we compare to the state. And so this particular chart shows Buncombe County Schools compared to North Carolina. Buncombe County Schools is that top horizontal line, and the North Carolina is the bottom. The first two columns are grade level proficiency. So Buncombe County Schools did dip in overall proficiency. This is all the EOG and EOC scores together. The previous year, we were 54.2 proficient. At the end of last year, we were 53.7. Whereas right below that, you can see that the state did increase slightly. And then the two columns on the far right here are college and career ready scores. Those are, you're proficient if you're a level four and five. And so in Buncombe County Schools, that did dip just a little bit. And then statewide, the percent proficient there dipped a little bit as well. I'm going to take you through another series of data. Going to do this fairly swiftly, but I'm going to teach you how to look at it in this first little set. And then we're going to circle back around and talk about some key takeaways. So the first graph here is all about combined proficiency scores for third, fourth, and fifth grade together, all in reading or English language arts. And what you'll see is a lovely line that shows a nice increase in proficiency from 21, 22 to the end of the last school year. That definitely lines up with the metrics I showed you earlier in K through three. And as those students matriculate up through the grade levels, we're going to continue to see this increase in proficiency. That's what we want to see. What that shows us is the strategies that we're using here in these grade levels work. And we want to find ways to replicate those in other content areas. Now we'll layer on growth. And that's the same graph you just saw in the top left corner on proficiency. But when you tease apart growth for third, fourth, and fifth grade, you'll see a variety of data. You'll see that we're exceeding growth in third and fourth grade reading. And then in fifth grade, you'll see that we did not meet growth last year in fifth. And so that is a clear area of focus for us. And then this last series of graphs, again focused on reading grades three through five. On the left, you'll see a snapshot of data. And this is proficiency by student group. In reading, reading three is third grade reading. Reading four is fourth grade reading. Reading five is fifth grade reading. And what you'll see there are, we do have noticeable gaps in subgroup data here, really with all of our subgroups compared to the white subgroup. And you will see, you know, variability honestly from grade level to grade level here. We'll circle back around and talk a little bit more about what that means and what we're doing to address those gaps. And then on the right-hand side, again, this is growth. And so you see the negative two to positive two line there. Anything in between shows we're meeting growth with these subgroups. Anything above that positive two shows we're exceeding. Anything below that negative two line shows we're not quite meeting growth in that particular student group. And again, there's a lot of variability there between grade level. And so if you look at fifth grade, all of those lines are pointing down there. And so what that shows you is we've got some work to do with some strategies we're using in fifth grade. But you can see generally in reading grade three, those bars are pointing up. There's some meeting at high levels and exceeding growth there. And so we're doing some great things there. And in fourth grade, it's a little bit more of a combination of both. I will point out with the green bars there, you can see that our students with disabilities population is a group that we're really focused on. And how can we move the needle both on growth and proficiency with that group? But there are certainly needs throughout all student groups here. The next series of graphs would be reading in grades six through eight. You can see our proficiency there is a little bit more flat across the board. And when you layer on growth here, you can see grades six and seven are meeting growth. In grade eight, we have a little work to do on growth there. And then in high school English too, they're almost exceeding growth. And then you can see the same two subgroup graphs that I showed just a few minutes ago with the lower grades in reading. We'll switch over to math in grades three through five. Again, this is the proficiency line. What I will tell you about math last year is we went into the year with optimism and a brand-new math curriculum in K through eighth grade and the hurricane hit. And we were determined to implement and learn this new curriculum. It is research-based and tied to evidence that any year you start a new curriculum... It is research-based and tied to evidence that any year you start a new curriculum, you typically do see a little bit of a dip in proficiency. And I think on top of the days that we missed and the remote instruction, it made math pretty difficult last year. So there is a slight dip in proficiency that we definitely correlate with all of those factors. I feel really great about where we're headed in math this year. Overlaying that with growth, even with that bit of a dip in proficiency, our fourth grade exceeded expected growth, which is incredible with a new curriculum. Our fifth grade continues to be an area of focus. And then the last graph in the series here would be the one on the left with the student group's proficiency overall. Again, you're going to see similar gaps in proficiency here. And then you'll see the growth there. Again, very obvious that fifth grade continues to be an area where we need to focus across the board in our core instruction, but also how are we growing our students? And then we'll take a snapshot here at math grades six through eight, and that actually includes eighth graders who took Math One as eighth graders. And you can see our proficiency is pretty consistent here from year to year. Layering on growth, you'll see sixth grade met, seventh grade exceeded, and again, here in eighth grade, did not meet growth. And again, that's an area we'll focus on this year. And then layering on our subgroup, or student group, excuse me, graphs here on the left, you see a snapshot of math grades six through eight, proficiency on the left, and growth there on the right. And again, quite a bit of variability in how we're doing. Certainly want to point out Math Seven there on that chart on the right, and the growth being above that positive two line, to me, is very significant. Now we'll take a look at high school math. We have Math One, and we have Math Three proficiency. Math Three really was a shining star last year in proficiency, and also when we look at student groups, Math One continues to be a real area of focus in our high schools this year. This is high school Math One. This does not include students who took Math One on an accelerated path in eighth grade. Again, layering on growth rounds out the story, where you can see that we have a couple areas where we did not, barely did not meet growth. We did meet growth in EOC Math Three. And again, you can see our student group proficiency snapshot on the left and growth trends on the right. I think this is the last series, grades five and eight, science and biology. You can see proficiency trends over time. I'm going to round out this story for you just a little bit too, because science was a bit tricky as well last year. Across our entire state, there were new science standards last year, and the test format changed. And so there was a lot of new learning for our teachers as they learn the new standards, as they implement a new curriculum, and prepare students for a new test format. And I do believe that that certainly contributed to some dips in proficiency across the board, and that was showed up in grades five, eight, and also biology. When you layer on growth, what this shows me is that the entire state had a dip in proficiency. We still were able to grow students. So in grade five, we met expected growth. In grade eight, we exceeded growth. And then in biology, we also met growth. So even though we had that dip in proficiency, growth kind of rounds out that story about how we did compared to all other students across the state. And again, here you'll see the graphs on the left, grade five and eight, science, and then biology, student group snapshot. And then on the right, you'll see the growth snapshot for grades five, eight, and biology. So how do we make sense of all this? Because it's a lot of numbers. And I want you to remember that every number represents a student here, right? We're talking about preparing every single student in Buncombe County Schools for a successful future. So in reading, we are so proud of our growth and proficiency. We want to keep up the things that are working, but there's opportunities there. Number one, in fifth grade, and there are proficiency gaps across student groups that we must address and pay attention to in the course of our work throughout the year. Reading is grades six through eight in English two. Proficiency is trending upward in grades six and seven. Grade eight continues to be an opportunity for improvement. And our student group proficiency for students with disabilities and addressing variability and growth across student groups is a real opportunity for us. And then in math grades three to five, there is a dip in proficiency last year. I told you about that. We have a brand-new curriculum and missed some days of instruction. But fourth grade exceeded growth, and so we know that it can be done. And fifth grade growth and proficiency is a real focus area. We've already started that work this year, as well as addressing continued gaps in proficiency between our white, black, and students with disabilities student groups. Math six through eight proficiency remains, remains a little bit flat here, but we did meet and exceed growth in all grade levels except grade eight. And it's interesting, our black student group there in math six through eight shows higher growth than the white student group. In high school, Math One and Three, Math Three has this great positive trend and higher proficiency than Math One. Math One does show a bit of a negative proficiency trend. There's opportunities here for improved growth in student group gaps in both subject areas. And finally, in grades five through eight, science and biology, we did meet or exceed growth in all of those areas, even though proficiency did trend downward just a bit. The gap was narrowed between white and Hispanic student groups. Opportunities, however, exist in narrowing the gap between white and black students and students with disabilities. And again, fourth, fifth grade is an area of focus. All right, the last data set, I promise. Let's round out our story by some proficiency trends by student group. I'm going to start with this all-subject student group. And so you'll see a cluster of bars, and each cluster represents a different student group over the course of the last four years. And so the black student group on the left, what you'll see is certainly a gap between other, most other student groups there. But what you will see is a slight increase in proficiency over time. We know that focusing on graph, meeting students where they are, and growing them as far as we can consistently over time will close gaps. In grade three, you can see the trend here is generally an increase in each student group over the course of the last four years. That is true evidence of a consistent approach that's working across the board for all students. In grades five and eight, science, the proficiency trend here is, is a little bit all over the place. You can see generally, the green bar on the right shows that dip in proficiency across the board. But if you don't look at those green bars, you'll see our black subgroup was trending upward, white subgroup down just a bit, Hispanic down just a bit, students with disabilities variable, and our economically disadvantaged group trended down just a bit. And then Math Three, this is pretty variable here, but one thing I will note is that we have some taller bars in some of our student groups that we hadn't seen that, seen before. The black student group, Hispanic, students with disabilities, and economically disadvantaged, the gap is a bit smaller here between student groups. All those takeaways are pretty much just shared with you, and we can go back and take a look at those. I think the real takeaway here is we know what works in certain areas. Our data paints a story that makes us really, makes it really clear where our work is, and our district, their central services staff through curriculum and instruction, and our principals and teachers are committed to this work. We're leading the climb, and we want to get better at getting better. That is the spirit of continuous improvement, finding out what works and putting it into practice. And we ground that in our strategic plan. We elevate minds, voices, and possibilities of our students. We bring our students to the table, our staff to the table, our families, our community members to the table. And we, we collectively figure out how to solve the problems that maybe have been deep and ingrained into our school system and into our results. And we want to do better for every student. And so this year, one intentional step that we've taken is to create our new instructional framework. That's certainly an extension of our strategic plan, but it's aligned with research-based best practices about what works in classrooms across our system. It's all focused on the student learning experience. We want to create the conditions that are conducive to student learning. It takes intentionality. And so when you look at them on the left side there, the domain of intentional instructional design is important and essential for us to deliver a quality learning experience for our students. And we want our students to be welcomed, to be appreciated for who they are, to have a sense of belonging in our classrooms. We want our instruction to be relevant and meaningful to each student, and for each student, that means something a little bit different. It's our responsibility collectively to set the conditions for student success. Our responsibility as a district is to support and help our leaders discern the most strategic levers for improvement and to provide them resources and guidance as they lead the climb, and to work with our Board of Education to allocate resources equitably. Our school has a huge responsibility here. We know that the teacher and the principal are the top two most impactful positions when you think about student growth and learning in any school. They analyze data just like we've looked at tonight. They determine where improvements, improvements need to be made and identify those levers. They monitor progress on a regular basis over the course of the year, and they do that in many ways, but especially through the formulation of a school improvement plan. They allocate their own resources equitably to meet the needs of their students. They set a master schedule. It's one of the most important things a principal does. And they focus on a three-tiered instructional model that addresses both proficiency and growth. Our principals are rock stars. You'll see two pictures here on the left of Ms. Kristi Jones, and then Bradley McMahon, both at our Owen Schools, who have just been incredible leaders through all that we experienced last year. And they're leading this instructional framework in their school building. In fact, every one of our forty-five principals led that training in their school system. And then on the right, this is a picture that was actually taken last week of our fifth grade principal group, as we're coming together and we're putting our heads together to decide what we can do collectively to move the needle on that fifth grade proficiency and growth. We have leveraged summer programming. On the left there, you'll see that we were so grateful to have received state funding and multiple sources of grant funding to ensure summer programming for every single student in Buncombe County Schools, even our preschool students who are heading into kindergarten. We know just how important the preschool experience is. And collectively as an organization, I look forward to some times when we can talk more about a big vision for universal pre-K and how we can make that work, because we know the earlier we start and intervene with our students, the more of a chance they have to be successful, and the more those gaps will be narrowed on the first day of kindergarten. In the middle there, you see our EC Summer Institute. We are working hard with our teachers of students with disabilities and how we can support them in instruction. And on the right there, you'll see two fabulous coaches, Chanina Tovar and Carrie Gregory, our two workhorse coaches who are out there every day with students in schools, making sure that our teachers know the best strategies to meet the needs of these learners. Every student here is a part of the story of Buncombe County Schools. It's up to us to join together to write a story that will set them up for a next chapter in their story that's as successful as it can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. That was amazing. Since it's Major League Baseball playoff season, I'll say that you just hit a home run. I think it was, if there was such a thing, we're hitting a home run around educational testing presentations.
Thank you.
You did amazing job. Board, any questions or comment for Dr. Reed?
Of course, I have comments. And I would like to echo what Mr. Elliott said. Great presentation, very thorough, and I appreciate the time and effort that you and your staff did, or used to put this presentation together. So a couple of things that stand, well, there's several things that stand out, but one of the things I looked at is at the end of, I think, in kindergarten, we had seventy-three percent of our kids proficient, but that already means that twenty-seven percent of them are not. So when you take a look at that, and as time goes on, oftentimes those children struggle even more and more each year. And so obviously, that's a real eye-opener to me to see that level of detail. And the concern I have, I've said this to a board member the other day, you really have to send your children to preschool or be, have been a teacher to prepare kids for entering kindergarten. And that's sad to me, because, you know, it used to be kindergarten got you kind of ready for school, but now kids have to be prepared. I do want to make a statement about our ML population. I've done this every year I've been on the board, and our economically disadvantaged kids, because as you can see by the list, four of those low-performing schools are in the Irwin District, and all four of those, well, actually, there's five, all five of those, when I look at them, are absolutely challenged economically. And, and they have forty percent or more in multilingual students. So that does play a part. But I also want to make sure that people know, we have, and I can speak to this with a hundred percent, we have great principals, particularly in the Irwin District, that I work so closely with, and I wouldn't change a single one of them. So oftentimes, people will go, it's that principal, or it's that teacher. I know those people are working day and night, and I'm going to get emotional, Mr. Elliott over here, but I know what they do and how hard these principals are working. But I also look at WD Williams, Oakley, Owen Middle. They are very similar to the district that I represent, and so I want folks to realize they are working very, very hard. And I'll say it, like I've said it the last two years, this, now is the time, we have to make some tough decisions and make sure that we have the right staffing in these schools that are low-performing. And when you talk about equity in the staffing, I circled that and highlighted that, because I'm going to be using that, Dr. Jackson, with the budget time. Because I believe, politics, it doesn't matter to me. It's about what we need to do for children. And I think there's some things that we need to do different, and if we're saying we're going to look at our staffing, then I'm going to hold y'all accountable for that, because to me, that's what's going to make the biggest difference for our schools.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fleming. Any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, I just have one quick question is, I was thinking about the fifth grade and the challenges that were displayed from this past year in the testing results on growth. Fifth, if fifth grade would have, they, those students would have been in kindergarten in twenty nineteen, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Six, six years prior. So they would have been starting kindergarten right at the beginning of the disruption that was caused by COVID. And I'm curious if, if that type of disruption in your kindergarten year happened across the state or across the country, I would think, you know, that's a significant thing to happen if you're kindergarten, just starting to learn colors and how to read and numbers, and that's the foundation of your next several years of education. So I'm just curious, is your thoughts around, is there a correlation between that fifth grade growth and that being tied to kindergarten disruption? And then also, how does that compare to like, if you look at it across the state? Is it a similar trend in fifth grade in most places?
Yeah, so, so thank you for that question. I do believe across the state, COVID would have had probably a fairly similar impact. However, every district handled that differently, and we have some students across the state who were in in-person instruction where others weren't. And so it wasn't necessarily an equal playing field across the state. One thing we have in Buncombe County Schools that's unique is a transition between fourth and fifth grade with our intermediate schools. And we know transition itself can have an impact on scores, and so I would say that the transition in general had a bit of an impact, on top of the fact that last year was what it was. We were impacted in a way very different than anyone else in the state, yet our growth score was measured exactly the same. Our proficiency trend was down, but maybe not even down as significantly as the growth, because we were compared, again, growth is comparative, to every other fifth grader across the entire state. And so to me, that shows that our fifth graders were impacted by the difference in their experience last year, not only with the transition to a brand-new school, but a transition the month before a hurricane hit. They didn't even have time to build relationships with teachers and students when all of those students come together from all the different come together from all the different feeder schools. And so I do believe that had a huge impact on what we see, maybe even more so than the pandemic impact. I will say that anytime you have missed instruction and you're looking at test scores, if you see a content area that is heavily based on skill-based instruction, like early reading or math, you will see more of an impact, and we saw that over COVID.
Yeah, I really appreciate all the hard work that you and staff put into pulling all of this data together to show us where we are as a school system. And we know that school systems are made of people, and we're here to serve students, and our mission says that we are here to make sure that every student thrives and learns. And I know that when you dig into the data, you can see evidence of that everywhere, that we are working really hard in our schools buildings to help each and every student strive. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on with your agenda, I believe it is time for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everybody. It's good to see you. It's now time for public comment. As a reminder, speakers will be called in the order in which they've signed up. All speakers will have three minutes to speak, and you will see a timer on the diocese. When it hits yellow, it will be 30 seconds left, and when it hits red, your time is up. We do ask that you follow the guidelines set in board policy. We also ask that you refrain from using profane language, making threats or revealing confidential student or staff information, and we ask that you address the board as a whole. And please note that although the board does not respond to public comment, they are listening and taking notes. So turn it over to Tim.
Mr. Chair, there are seven public comments tonight. Just a reminder, please introduce yourself and the district in which you live or the school that your child attends. The first speaker is Craig White.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Jackson, Dr. Reed. I'm Craig White from the Campaign for Southern Equality, and I speak tonight to all of the teachers and families in the district. As you may be aware, the General Assembly passed a law that requires every teacher to catalog and publish every book in their classroom library. This is, of course, harassment legislation, an unfunded mandate, a waste of time, and a dilemma for teachers. Do you remove the books that might be controversial, or do you keep them but potentially open yourself up to harassment from hate groups? Legislation that empowers harassment is harassment legislation. But teachers, here's the thing. Every parent I have talked to in the past month has said, ask us for help. Ask us to come in and catalog the books. Don't waste your time. Ask us. And so teachers, I encourage you to reach out to your students' caregivers, reach out to your school's PTO, reach out to Public Schools Strong, reach out to me if you run out of anybody else. And while you have some parents there, talk to them. Talk to them about mirrors and windows. They're cataloging the books anyway, so talk to them about what are the books they're really glad to see? What are the books they think are missing? Do they have recommendations? Maybe they'd be willing to make a donation, because parents who want a diverse and inclusive classroom have the same rights as those who prefer to ban and censor. But we must speak up. We must protect our teachers and support our teachers if we're going to keep the Buncombe County schools' promise of embracing diversity. So teachers, I hope you will ask for help. Families, I hope you will step up and offer that help. And board members, you are welcome to. Find a classroom, help catalog the books, and while you're there, talk with parents and teachers about mirrors and windows. What are the stories that are being told? What are the stories that are being silenced? Together, you can build a classroom library that everyone can be proud of, and then you can list those books proudly. This provides a shield for teachers and administrators from censorship. I'm sorry, that book was reviewed and approved and requested by other parents. So you can opt your own kid out, but that book stays. And parents can know that every child, their child, is seen and accepted at school just like they are at home. Thank you.
Next speaker is Sharon Broussard.
Reynolds District. Good evening, Dr. Jackson and school board members. Likewise, Academy is here and trying to get approved in both Buncombe County schools and Asheville City schools. Lifewise is a program that pulls public school students out of class during the school day to attend Bible lessons. You may hear, don't worry, it's nondenominational, but in reality, the curriculum comes straight from Lifeway, the publishing arm of the Southern Baptist Convention. Its stated mission, to reach unchurched students. You might be thinking, it's optional, just don't sign your kids up. But that ignores the impact on everyone else. While some kids ride a red bus to Lifewise, classmates left behind often sit idle or do busy work instead of learning. Instructional time is lost for all students. Lifewise is focused on the youngest students. 80% of participants are between six and 11 years old. Kids are sent back to school with candy, toys, business cards to hand out, and even promises of rewards like ice cream or pizza parties for getting classmates to join. When Lifewise meets during lunch or recess, only about 21% participate. But when it replaces class time, enrollment more than doubles to 46%. Kids aren't suddenly more religious, they're choosing to skip class, and that's the strategy. Starts at lunch or recess, then push into class time because that's the only way their enrollment really multiplies. Some will claim it's their right, but that's misleading. The Supreme Court has ruled release time programs can be legal under specific conditions. They are not a guaranteed right. But isn't it free? While our schools stretch every dollar, Lifewise is fueled by millions from hidden donors using foundations like the National Christian Foundation. These funds let wealthy donors give money without disclosing who they are or what their agenda is. That means the real backers of Lifewise are hidden from the public. This money isn't local, and it isn't transparent. It's big money with a mission, and our kids' classrooms are the target. So the real question is this: whose time, whose money, and whose education is at stake? Our kids deserve uninterrupted learning. Know the facts. Protect public schools. Thank you.
Next speaker is Natalie Dorsey.
Natalie Dorsey. I have a kid at Hominy Valley Elementary and also INCA Intermediate. I am also here to speak about Lifewise Academy, which actually should really be called Lifewise Missionary Project. This is not academic. This is not an academic establishment. They do not teach NC standards of course study. They use instructional time to teach Bible lessons that do not further the educational goals put forth by our state. There are 10 steps that Lifewise recommends following to establish their program into the school system, and they are on step four currently in our area. Even if you have not heard of this missionary project yet, please inform yourselves to protect our children's instructional time. Lifewise uses Supreme Court ruling from 1952 that that says that children can be released to go to religious events or teaching, but Lifewise does this once a week, which takes away from learning from the whole school community. BCS came up with four goals in their strategic plan. All of these are challenged by Lifewise's practices. The goals are: every student meet or exceeding growth like we talked about tonight; taking away instructional time will decrease classroom time to meet the goal. BCS kids are already behind after losing learning time from Helene and COVID; establishing a classroom, school, and district culture that is welcoming, responsive, and safe for all of our students, families, and staff. When not all kids have the same experience at school and children are not taught, and children are taught that some families' way of living, like the LGBTQ+ community, are sinful, this does not create a welcoming culture or safe environment for all families and students; preparing each student for success in life by engaging them in regular application of durable skills across school settings; taking kids out of recess and lunch decreases the amount of time where they can learn durable skills, such as working together as a team, having open-ended conversations with classmates, and taking turns; providing ongoing intentional support for every staff member in order to equip them to meet the needs of each and every student they serve; by having a group of students that leave weekly, this causes challenges for teachers to figure out when to teach new material, and this doesn't sound like a supportive situation for our staff. The website, respectpublicschools.com, gives multiple ways that schools can prevent Lifewise and other similar programs from cutting into instructional time. They recommend making all classes core, even gym, art, and they're further addressed on the handout over here. What I'm asking you as a school board is to please inform yourself about Lifewise Academy and also try to make policies that protect our students in Buncombe County schools instructional time. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. Firstly, I want to thank you for listening to the parents' concerns about the lack of specials like PE, music, and art at Estes Elementary. I spoke to you last year, and I'm so grateful you heard us. This year, Estes is in a much better place with a stronger rotation for art and PE, and also STEM has been brought back into the classroom. From the bottom of my heart, thank you for making that happen for the kids. Tonight, I wanted to talk to you about something slightly different. I feel like we've made enough excuses over the past several years with COVID, Hurricane Helene, and other disruptions. Now it's time to help our children get back on track and catch up. I strongly believe we need to be more thoughtful about weather-related closures. Too often, the entire county closes at the hint of potential bad weather rather than actual unsafe conditions. It may be the easy option, but it isn't always the best for our children. I understand there will be varying opinions and that some teachers live far outside the district. I'm not asking for a one-size-fits-all solution, just that we consider ways ahead of winter to keep children in school whenever possible. It doesn't make sense to cancel school when it isn't raining, snowing, or icing in certain areas while others are affected. I also wanted to address the school buses. Closures are often justified because buses can't safely travel on back roads. My eldest daughter started at Kuntz Intermediate this year, and buses are frequently canceled due to driver shortages. To me, this shows that children and families do find a way to get to school. Could we test a system where the school stays open, a message goes out saying buses are limited or unavailable, but the school is open? I believe many parents would still get their children to school safely. Buncombe County Schools is a large system, the largest in Western North Carolina. With 45 schools, it seems impractical to close all schools when only a few face unsafe roads. Could we explore closure decisions by district or by school so that the majority of students who can safely attend aren't penalized? I understand this might not be a simple solution. I'm simply asking you to consider this so we can find ways to keep our children in school whenever it is safe. Our children benefit most from being in the classroom. For those who truly cannot get to school, we could find solutions like provide makeup packets or catch-up options instead of shutting down learning for everyone. Thank you again for all you do for our students and families. I look forward to your guidance on how we can keep our children in school safely as much as possible. Thank you.
Hello, board members. Since 2023, I have been coming to these meetings periodically to speak to the importance of increasing the local teaching pay supplement for Buncombe County's teachers. With the ever-growing cost of living in our region, more and more of our teachers are working for less than the living wage, a wage that only covers annual expenses. Even though we are still seven months away from the board's next budget recommendation to the county commission, I want to speak today, not to suggest specific numbers, but to contextualize why meaningfully increasing the local supplement is so long overdue. Teaching being a sub-living wage profession in Buncombe County is a fairly new phenomenon. Just a decade ago, a starting teacher in Buncombe County was making 40% of roughly $11,000 over a living wage. Now, starting teachers, even with the increases that have been made to the state's salary schedule and the local supplement, make 15% or $8,000 less than a living wage. So let's contextualize how we got here. 2021 was the first year in which the cost of living, measured using the universal living wage formula and data published by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, exceeding the starting salary of a teacher in Buncombe County. At the time, the local pay supplement stood at 8.5%, a rate which had last been adjusted in 2016. In 2021, the Buncombe County Board of Education and the Asheville City Board of Education included a 5% and 7.5% increase to their local supplements as part of its budget recommendation to the county commission respectively. Unfortunately, the county commission rejected those proposed budgets, in part over concern for loss of revenue due to COVID-19 pandemic. However, by the end of the year, a faster-than-expected recovery had actually resulted in a 20% budget surplus. In 2021, because of increases to the state's salary schedule, starting teacher pay in Buncombe County increased from $38,000 to $38,500 a year. Cost of living increased from $36,000 to $41,500 a year. Given my limited time, I'm going to skip a few years and just give you the the last data here. But in this year, we do not have a state budget yet, so I cannot give you what the state teacher pay is, even adjusting for local supplements. But last year, it was $45,000. What we do have is the cost-of-living number, and that year it will increase to $55,500. There are two things that I want to ask of you as you consider the next budget. The first is changing from a percentage to a dollar amount on the local supplement to disengage us from the rapid changes that the state has had in its own salary policy. The second is that I ask that you adjust for the many years in which teachers have not had the raises that they deserve. Thank you so much.
Jerry Nugent.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jerry Nugent, and I have two grandchildren at Oakley Elementary that I care very much about. And I want to tag on to what some of my colleagues have told you today about the Lifewise. I want to raise concerns about the potential of a proposal to allow Lifewise into our district. While I respect families' rights to seek religious instruction, integrating it into the school day presents serious legal and policy risks for the district. First, the Constitution requires neutrality on religion. The Supreme Court has been clear, religious instruction cannot occur on school property with public resources, and participation must be truly voluntary. If the district is perceived as endorsing or facilitating one specific faith, we could face legal challenges that are both costly and damaging to public trust. Second, there are equity concerns. Our district serves families from many religious and nonreligious backgrounds. If one program is offered during the school day, students who opt out may lose instructional time or feel excluded. Federal nondiscrimination laws, including Title VI, obligate us to ensure no student is disadvantaged because of their faith or lack of faith. Third, there is the matter of instructional integrity. Our core responsibility is academics: literacy, math, science, critical thinking. Every minute of the school day is valuable. I'm not telling you something you don't already know. Allowing time for religious programming takes away from Allowing time for religious programming takes away from that mission and could put struggling students further behind. Finally, approving one program sets a precedent. If the district allows Life Wise, what happens when other religious or nonreligious groups request equal time? Without a clear policy framework, the district risks becoming entangled in disputes. It is not equipped to manage. For these reasons, I urge the board to protect the district's neutrality and academic mission by declining to integrate Life Wise into the school day. Families who want faith-based instruction have many avenues outside of school hours. Our public schools must remain inclusive and welcoming to every student. Thank you.
Ann Brown.
Good evening. My name is Equaler Brown, and I am from the INCA District. I am here respectfully to raise significant concerns regarding the provision of student support services and classroom management strategies within Buncombe County Schools. My grandson attends one of Buncombe County's largest elementary schools, which serves approximately 600 students. Despite its substantial student body, the school currently lacks a full-time dedicated mental health therapist. The existing service provided by MAHEC offers a therapist on campus only from Wednesday to Friday. This limited availability is particularly troubling, given the recent changes in agency contracts, which have unfortunately resulted in many children and families losing vital support systems. Furthermore, I understand that federal funding has previously been allocated for trauma-informed training for administrators. While valuable, the most immediate and profound impact could be achieved by extending the specialized training to classroom teachers. Educators are on the front lines, and without robust trauma-informed training, it becomes challenging for them to confidently distinguish between behaviors stemming from a child's disability and those that are manifestations of trauma. My observations also lead me to reflect on the importance of inclusive classroom practices and the mitigation of unconscious biases. It is imperative that our educational approaches are responsive to the unique needs of every child. My grandson has shared instances where he has been disciplined or removed from class for behavior such as not sitting up or utilizing the calm-down corner for self-regulation. These actions, when viewed without a trauma-informed lens or an understanding of diverse coping mechanisms, can inadvertently create barriers to learning. To foster a more supportive and conducive learning environment, it is essential to explore a dynamic classroom management tools that cater to various students' needs. Simple additions such as a wobble seat or standing desk, or combined with heightened awareness of an educator's tone or verbal delivery can significantly impact a child's ability to engage and to regulate. Currently, my grandson's experiences often lead to disengagement and a sense of discouragement, ultimately hindering his learning and participation. The emotional and instructional energy brought by teachers and staff profoundly shapes a child's educational trajectory. We all recall the teachers who positively impacted our lives. It is crucial to ensure that every child has access to educators equipped to understand and reach them effectively. I hope we can collaboratively work towards enhancing the support systems and the pedagogical approaches within our schools.
Mr. Chair, that concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, board, is our action agenda. We have a recommendation to approve North Carolina State University on behalf of the Institute for Transportation, Research, and Education. Dr. Jackson, is there any, besides what's provided to the board and the public for information online in our packets, is there any other information you'd like to share?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the Board of Education. You'll recall a previous meeting as the school year was coming to an end where the board requested a study of capacity and enrollment trends across Buncombe County, particularly in those areas where we see the community growing. This study by North Carolina State University through the ORED, the Operation, Research, and Education Department of NC State, is one that the school system engaged in just about 20 years ago and was the starting point for our yearly internal capacity studies. This study would do both: answer the questions the board has had with regards to capacity and enrollment trends across the school system, helping to make future decisions, and as a pressure check for our internal operations around our yearly annual capacity study and enrollment reports that the board receives at their April meeting. I recommend approval of this study in answer to the board's request for such a study.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. I'll just recall that the request originally came out of the consolidation feasibility study that was conducted a couple of years ago, and some of the recommendations from that consultant that did that work for us to look at this. So just wanted to remind the board about that, and anybody have any questions or comments regarding this action item? Yes, Craig?
Dr. Jackson, when will we receive the data from this study?
Thank you. The timeline calls for presentation for the study by the end of the school year, so they would work on that from the time of adoption or the signature of the contract, work on it through the year, and by the end of the school year, we'd have that information.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the recommendation.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. The recommendation on the approval for the NCSU on behalf of the I T R E has been passed. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Seven.
We got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? I will just call out in my discussion here that I attended a great advisory council meeting at Reynolds High School as a member of the board and as a parent, and had a great time. There was a lot of engaged dialogue and parent involvement, and that council keeps growing, as do others, as we see here that we have members to add. So any other further discussion? All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? We already had a first, second, and discussion.
No, we didn't.
We did. Getting late. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. The consent agenda is passed. Next on our agenda is the information agenda. Notification of contracts for construction and repair projects at Avery's Creek Elementary School. We have policies for first reading. Twenty-three oh-two, remote participation on board meetings. Twenty-three forty-two, voting methods. Thirty-two ten, parental inspection of and objection to instructional materials. Thirty-five ten, religious-based exemptions from school programs. Thirty-six twenty, extracurricular activities and student organizations. Forty twenty-three, seventy-two thirty-three, pregnant and parenting students and employees. Forty-one twenty, domicile and residence requirements. Forty-two forty, seventy-three twelve, child abuse and related threats to child safety. Forty-four hundred attendance, forty-four hundred R attendance. Fifty twenty-four, sixty-one twenty-seven, seventy-two sixty-six, emergency epinephrine delivery systems. Sixty-one twenty-five, administering medicines to students. Sixty-three forty, transportation service vehicle contracts. Seventy-one hundred, recruitment and selection of personnel. Seventy-three ten and forty forty, staff-student relations. Seventy-three fifty, fifty seventy, public records, retention, release, and disposition. Seventy-eight twenty, personnel files. May I have a motion? Well, yeah, we have a motion to approve the information agenda, please.
So move.
Okay, don't need one.
You don't have to do a motion to approve that.
Thank you. Dean? We didn't need a motion to approve the information agenda. It's informational in nature. With that being said, our announcements and future meetings, the next regular Board of Education meeting is November 6, 2025, at 5:30 in the Minitorium. Work session updates and closed session will begin at 4:00 PM in the Executive Conference Room here at 175 Bingham Road. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we're adjourned.